Good evening, everybody. I called to order the Tuesday, October 21st, 2025 meeting of the Stoughton Select Board. The time is 7:01. If you are able, please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first items on the agenda is an executive session. We've got four items altogether. I know there is a... So, the first item is Item A, Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a2, to conduct collective bargaining session. Grievance Frank Mogan. Item B, Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. Grievance Frank Mogan. Item C, Approval of Executive Session Minutes, meeting of August 27th, 2025, and October 7th, 2025. Item D, Executive Session pursuant to Open Meeting Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation concerning the Stoughton Media Access Corporation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating or litigating position of the board and the chair so declares. Is there a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, Mr. Gito? Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. We will be returning to open session. Before we do, I just want to also put on the record that there is a quorum of the Select Board present with, as you just heard, Mr. Gito, Vice Chair Roberts, Mr. Carrera, Mr. McCrisky, and myself, all present. So, we will be returning from the executive session in a moment. Thank you so much. Unfortunately, they are.
They are?
Yeah, it just takes a...
They only paid half the bill check.
We're waiting... I think it takes a long time for them to warm up, and I could be mistaken. I...
They're warming up.
What was that?
It does take some time.
Yeah. So, I apologize. Are you able to hear us okay?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Okay. So, we'll move into the... Let's see. I'll just go ahead and do this. Welcome back, everybody. The time is 8:08. We've returned to the open session. The very first item on our open session is Citizens Comments. Are there any comments?
Would you believe...
I'm sorry?
Would you believe...
Oh, we did that before the executive. Thank you very much. Ms. Walsh.
To echo a previous speaker, I've been in the buildings since 6:00, and this is as bright as it's been. I don't think it's getting any better. I thought it was just my really poor eyesight until someone else mentioned it.
The only thing I can think of is we turned the heat on today, which is a big draw in the electricity. That's the only thing I can think of. It's on full blast, all the lights.
Well, I also can't hear you. Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. I didn't get close enough. The only thing I can think of, Cynthia, is that it could possibly be a draw from our heating system, which was turned on today. I don't know why it would be, but that's the only thing that changed today. All the lights are on.
Thank you.
And all the dimmers are up. But we'll have already look at it first thing in the morning.
Any other comments? Oh, Mr. Collins, it's good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Honorable Board. My new friend, the lawyer. We're friends, yeah. All the comments I'm going to make tonight are positive and nothing negative. And first of all, I'd like to start with Mr. Gito, if you don't mind, sir. We... I've been trying to get these comments out for a while now because we had no comments in one Select Board meeting, and I was not able to come down to state my comments. But, Mr. Gito, on Prospect Street, we had a conversation about the Grace Church on the old Hanson property, and I'm not quite sure how that's going. I had a few people that, in my neighborhood, that go to Grace Church that are wondering what's happening. Is that in the planning board, or is that... I don't have any answers to give to them. Maybe you can enlighten me on that.
I have no answers to give. I gave comments on that project early on, and I... If people want to deal with that, they can do it. If they choose not to, they can do that as well.
Okay. I'll check with the planning board. Thank you. In town, engineer.
But I have not followed up to find out about the adjacent property to that...
Okay.
...to that project.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Roberts, Vice Chair, how are you?
Hello, Mr. Collins. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Nice to see you.
My comment to you is I want to compliment you on your engagement with the two women that are applying for that new restaurant at the old House of Bruce. And I thought you were very engaging and respectful and interested in their business and how they operate. And I want to compliment you on your questions and the answers that were given to you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Collins. Thank you.
This one here is for Mr. Carrera, Scott. All right, sir. Regarding your comments about the volunteerism for veterans and people in town that you mentioned, they mention names, which I appreciate, but I just want to say that I thank you for mentioning about the people that, in this town, that volunteer on committees, meals and wheels, driving a bus, or whatever happens in town. And I really appreciate that you mentioned that, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Chet. It's well deserved.
And, Mr. McCrisky, my friend for years and years and years. Okay. So, I'm sorry?
He thinks he knows you longer than me, but he forgets that I was probably doing your saw when you moved into the town, like you were still in the reserves.
Yeah, yeah.
Was that when you were on the auxiliary police?
Exactly.
So, who'd you know longer? Scotty.
I thank you, Joe. You're the one that first approached me when you first started running for a select person. You remember?
Oh, I remember. I remember it all well.
Yeah, we did some good times.
Yeah, we do. We still do.
Okay. So, let's... Let me not get off my... The point I'm trying to make. Joe, you brought up the Veterans Memorial Wall at Faxon Park a while back, you know, and I wanted to bring it up. That is a great idea. Great idea. I went to Ames... What do you call it? Mansion Walk, the whole thing. And Ames Easton has like a memorial, little small park with stones, you know, with all the engraving of all the prior service members that have passed away, the whole thing. And I'd really love to see that happen in Stoughton and Faxon Park that you brought up. And if I can do anything to help do that, you know, help getting that along, I'd be very much interested in helping you do that.
I appreciate it. And we've got to get it done eventually. It's got to go to town media.
No, but you bringing it up, just like...
Well, you know, we've talked many times on recognition of veterans, and sometimes the...
Yeah, but we're running out of squares.
Well, yeah, and sometimes the bar is raised too high for somebody that served, and they should be remembered as well.
No, you're right.
Anybody who's gone to fight in wartime in our country should be recognized.
Right. If we can do something to do that, that'd be great.
Yeah. No, thank you.
And, Mr. Cave. Okay. Last but not least, your show, well, you aired on Noah's Abram, I think is the last name, on Smack, and your description of what's going on in town was honest, open, and informative, and interesting to hear. And I appreciate you bringing out everything that the town's hap... What's happening in town that you brought out on that program. And I appreciate... I'm sure my three minutes are up. So, I just want to say thank you all. Doing a great job, and maybe tomorrow night.
Before you get up, I just actually wanted to say one thing. The last time you came and you asked to speak, we didn't have Citizens Comments. I was under the impression, given some of the items on the agenda, that there might be a lot of people who wanted to speak. But then when I got in here, I realized you probably were the only one, and that we could have made the time to include your comments. And so, I just wanted to apologize for that. I certainly didn't mean to offend. I thought you were very gracious about it and understanding. But at the same time, what I thought the situation was, where we might have a lot of speakers, we didn't. We could have accommodated you, and I just wanted to apologize to you for that.
That's not a problem, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to make this notice out to the people on the board that I appreciate everything you guys are doing, and I want to compliment you on things that you have done and said. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. And I don't believe there's... Well, there's not many people online. I know there's nobody online who would want to speak. Next is Select Board comments. Are there any members of the Select Board who would like to speak? I'll start with Mr. Gito, if you'd like. No comments. Vice Chair Roberts?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Tom Coulter. He made a comment in the Town Crier, this week's Town Crier, to provide an update on the depot. And I was so excited to hear that news, and I thought you wanted... You would like to share that to the public or to those residents that are not on the distribution list of the Town Crier. It was such good news.
Well, thank you, Deborah. It's the best part of my day every day. I go over there and see if they put a few more nails in, and I get all excited over it. Today, they're doing all the internal doors, and it's amazing. They look like they should have been thrown in the rubbish before they started. They took the... These are three-inch-thick doors, and they took the doors apart piece by piece by piece, sanded them all down, glued them all back together, fill all the old holes, because they had like 10 locks on each door, and then put in a new finish. And the door, when it's done, looks like it just came off a showroom floor, but it's the original door, the same wood. And so, every day, it's new, exciting. The windows come in next week. It's really... All the tile in all three bathrooms is now complete, so it looks like a real building now. So, December 5th is the target date. The only thing that can get in the way of that is National Grid turning on the new power system. We have a brand-new electrical system, and they're weeks and months behind, so we're doing everything to speed that up for them. Thank you for asking.
Congratulations to you and your staff.
Job well done.
Joe's leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes. Everybody's had happy thoughts.
I can hear... It sounds like you are, yeah.
All right. Through you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the Town Manager. I had a resident call me. I didn't act on it, and then I had a resident show up at my house on a Sunday, and I just happened to be outside switching trucks, so I didn't want to be rude. I listened. So, the gentleman I talked to was a little upset over the traffic at Turnpike and Central Streets, that the trucks are coming around the corner. If they're coming from Avon, it's right on red, but they're not stopping at the red to go right. They just... It's a right on red, and you just keep going. You don't stop, you just keep going. And the guy wasn't... He said he was waiting, and when the truck came around the corner, and some trucks, when they're heavy on the trailer, and they come around those corners, if it's a little dewy in the morning, or if there's leaves on the ground, they plow. And he said that the truck, like, stopped a foot from his door of his car. And he goes, "I'm retired. I didn't know the traffic was this bad." He goes, "They're just... They're flying through," and stuff like that. So, I don't know if the police department can watch it, or if it's going to turn into a three-month... Hey, let's... I was watching it, but then this board can make the decision like I made on Plain Street. We're not going to have a 20-day thing. We're just going to do it because we're street commissioners. And what we do is, if they don't want to do it and watch and stop, then we're going to have no rights on red, and I don't care how far the traffic backs up or how long it takes them to get down to where they're going. So, it's something that's going to be looked at, because I do know two families there, and they're young families, and one has toddlers, two and under, and one has young children that are 12 and under, and they walk the sidewalks, and those sidewalks are right there with the trucks coming up the hills.
So, is that Turnpike and Central?
Turnpike and Central, yeah.
That might be being active on as we speak. I was involved with another one at Turnpike and Central.
Are you turning your mic on, please?
I'm sorry?
Are you turning your mic on?
Sorry. The... I've been working on that for about four months, getting some facts and information together for a homeowner. We might... We'll share the name. I don't want to say it publicly. But there is a meeting that's already been set up with the Engineering Department on the right-of-way for visibility between Turnpike Street and Central Street. And it took a while, because there's a lot of homework to do, as you know, finding out where the right-of-way is, going through Mass Highway, see who has it. If we have that authority, a street commissioner, is that Mass Highway? Because, as you are well aware, Turnpike Street is the access road to 24. That's their alternative route if 24's got shut down, which was in full force today. But we'll talk after. I believe that you can speak to the Engineering Department, because I have an email that I can show you. As a matter of fact, the meeting is this Thursday, is the proposed meeting. Whether it happens, I don't know.
It'd be nice, the Engineering Department, if they were going to handle something that big, that affected all of us as street commissioners, maybe something should have got to us.
It wasn't that at that time, because it was a concentrated area. It was a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. So, it's... And there's things that the DPW can do if it's in the right-of-way.
Remember we fixed that where the small island was?
Right.
We fixed that turn there so that it would flow and it wouldn't bother the family and the... With the fence around the house. So, give them a chance to back out of their driveway.
Well, that's the thing. There's two people. One wants the overgrowth, the other one doesn't. So, we'll talk after. I just don't feel right saying publicly in case it's a different thing. I didn't want to...
I didn't mention any names. Thank you.
Thanks, good. Thank you, Mr. Carrera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. McCrisky, any comments?
No.
I have no comments either. We'll move on to the next item. This is Town Manager comments.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. So, we're moving on to the consent agenda. There's one item we're going to pull. There's only two items, so we'll just go ahead and separate these out. Start with, is there a motion to approve the open session minutes, meeting of September 16th, 2025, and October 7th, 2025?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made to approve by Vice Chair Roberts and seconded by Mr. McCrisky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're good to go. The next item is collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Stoughton and AFSSCME Local 362, Council 93, for fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '28. Oh, again, you actually had one more item on there. I didn't. But we'll come back around to that. But I'm going to turn this over to the Town Manager and Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief opening remark, if you wouldn't mind. I've negotiated a bunch of contracts now in this town with Kate and Deanna as wingmen, wingwomen. This is the best contract we've ever done. It was with a good group of people. We were able to hold down the average increase by providing incentives that drive continuous professional development. So, by way of concept, there are eight skill sets that they can be trained in, and they get paid more money for each skill set that they achieve. It could be a Class 1 water, Class 2 water. It could be operating a chainsaw. But it's a real breakthrough on labor management contracts in this town, because it's going to reward those people that want to grow, want to stay in Stoughton, want to be extremely valuable to the organization. And I want to thank Kate for having patience with us, as the other side tried to make everything based upon seniority. She had the patience to stick with us and make it on professional development. And this contract, more than any other contract, right now is on professional development. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to turn it over to Kate to go through the details.
Wow, I'm really feeling the love tonight.
Wait till tomorrow.
So, this was a slog, this contract getting to a deal. There were setbacks, there were disagreements, but ultimately, we came to what we think is a really good contract, which includes language changes, which help operational efficiency and create a more professionalized department. So, and some of those language changes include instituting a vehicle use policy to ensure safe operations, performance evaluations, so we can adequately assess how our employees are doing and succeeding, you know, various other requirements for approval of earned leave and things like that, which will make the operations much more efficient going forward. So, they're really big wins for the department in terms of making them a more professional department. So, in terms of the financials, high-level summary is we actually got a reduction in premium pay that is paid for snow overtime. So, for snow, you get a 15% premium pay. We reduced that to 10%, which will help us on some of those major storms that we found to be quite costly in kind of minor storm events. So, we're hoping to try to contain those costs for the town. We settled on fracolas, year one, a three, which is consistent with the other unions that have settled, a two-and-a-half for year two, which is within the parameters of what the board wanted to do for settlements going forward, and then a 3% for year three. In year three, and this is what Tom was talking about, there was some regrading that happened to try to show employees that working harder, working toward certifications and licenses, all which benefit the town, reduce the need for contracting out and all of those things, because we can handle it in-house, will be rewarded. So, we created two new grades and wedged them between the existing grades. So, if you got a certain number of certifications, you would be called a skilled laborer, and you can bring all of those new talents to the table, and it would be usable for the town. Likewise, those who drive the trucks, because we have CDL drivers, which is, you know, a lot of the complement at DPW, but there are some that are driving routinely. So, we wedged in a new grade for that between two existing grades to account for the fact that that's a more sophisticated skill that we're trying to, you know, pay for or make it more attractive to work harder and take those positions. And we're opening those up for application to the existing personnel. And then there were certain other positions that were just under market. So, the foreman and the mechanics were regraded, and to Tom's point, some of the pump operators were regraded to account for the fact that these are skills that are in high demand in other communities, and we want to be able to retain those employees who might otherwise be poached by your neighbors. So, it was really to incentivize and not to reward people just for simply hanging around, but reward them for what they bring to the table, which feels much more private sector and what maybe some of the public would be more used to. So, that's the long and the short of it.
Second.
So, this is a motion.
Aye. Second.
Because I didn't have my mic on. I apologize. One second. I just want to make sure that she has what she needs. Dolores, are you able to hear us?
Now I can, yes.
Okay. I apologize. So, were you able to get... Guys, I know you're taking the minutes. Were you able to gather what I said, which is just that we voted on item B, and it was a unanimous vote?
I didn't get who made the motion and who seconded it.
Thank you. It was... The motion was made by Mr. Carrera and seconded by Vice Chair Roberts.
And it was a unanimous, five ayes?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize.
Me, too.
So, yes, so there was a motion to... Was there a motion to approve item C?
It was made by Joe, seconded by Deborah.
Got it. So, a motion to approve the electronic billboard request made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item C is closed as well. Thank you so much. Next two items are ones that we've revisited a few times. I know there's been a couple of versions of this. The first is the amended town vehicle use policy. And as I understand it, the Town Manager has incorporated the changes requested into the document. I believe it's a Redline version, and the question is, do we want to accept these changes one by one, or there can also just be a motion to accept all of the changes? Mr. Carrera?
I think we should vote them separately. It won't take long. But I just have one change that I did run by the Town Manager, and he said he'd... I asked him if it was going to cause a problem. He says, "No, he doesn't think so."
Okay. No problem? Okay. I just need one second to move on to this. Give me one moment. Thank you very much. I didn't have a copy on me. If we're going to vote them all together, I'd be fine, but if we're going one by one, I wouldn't be able to do it. So, the first change appears on page three, and the following line was inserted under the heading of registering and insuring a vehicle. At the very end, the sentence, "In the event that an employee is assigned to vehicle, leasing options must be considered prior to purchasing... a purchase of the vehicle." Is there a motion to accept that change?
So made.
Okay. Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky. Is there a second? I'll second that.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. Okay, uh, so the motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that has been added to the contract, into this, uh, use policy. The next shows up on page four, uh, under employee driving records. Second paragraph, at the very end, the following sentence was inserted. "In the event an employee, employee's driving status has changed, they are expected to self-report to the human resource department by emailing no more than five days following the change in the driver's license status." Is there a motion to insert that change?
Second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. Page five, under assignment of municipal vehicles. The first bullet point, which shows up after the first paragraph, uh, there, the following sentence has been inserted. Employees assigned taking home vehicles, sorry, employees assigned take-home vehicles are expected to provide safe housing. Is there a motion to insert that line?
So made. Second.
Okay, made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. On page six, under rules and responsibilities, the second bullet point is, uh, redacted or removed. Uh, it reads as follows, "Individuals assigned a municipal vehicle with commuting privileges may take, quote, incidental personal uses, unquote, such as stopping at a grocery store or going to the bank on his or her way, but only if the stop does not add mileage to the trip." So that line was originally in there and was removed. Is there a motion to accept that change?
So made. Second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera.
Discussion, please?
Sure.
It seemed like a reasonable request. And if you have possession of a town vehicle and it's on your way home to stop at the grocery store, I don't know how they would get around that. So what does that mean exactly? And why did something occur that caused, uh, us to remove it, to limit that? That benefit, because I call it a benefit.
It, it is a benefit, uh, Madam Vice Chair. There have been incidences. Uh, we had a complaint of a town vehicle stopping at a package store. Bad luck, no accident, but a bad luck. We had an incident where a town vehicle about a year and a half ago got in a pretty, uh, significant accident with lots of damage inside a Stop &amp; Shop parking lot, uh, on the way home. Uh, it, it's really interesting. It seems to be that not to travel 20 miles, but to stop and go and, and, and that sort of thing, pulling out of parking lots and things like that. I don't remember which member, uh, made the amendment, but I, I do feel that it's a, a proper amendment. I would support it.
I, I accept the amendment based on the description.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that change is accepted. The next is on page eight at the bottom of the page. The final, uh, bullet point on that, on that page, uh, the following bullet point was added. "No town vehicle shall be altered in any way without the express written consent of the town manager." Is there a motion to accept that addition?
So made. Second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes unanimously. The next is on page 10, uh, under the heading Special Circumstances. The very last, uh, line in that paragraph was added. And it reads, uh, exemptions recommended by the town manager must be approved by and authorized by the chair and vice chair of the select board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, I spoke to the town manager and I asked him if he could add this language in. We could vote this language in.
Okay.
It says, "And a copy be supplied to the select board of said exemption form."
Okay.
That's all I want to add.
Okay. So again, that's, um, with, uh, I mean, we can take this as two votes, but I think we just added as one, uh, unless there's an objection to that. Uh, but the, the vote is to include the line as written and additionally the sentence that Mr. Carrera has recommended. Uh, if this fails, then we'll look back only at the original. Uh, but is there a motion to approve that language?
So made. Second.
Made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The language, uh, there's a, the, that includes what's written here as well as Mr. Carrera's, uh, addition has been voted unanimously. Next is page 12. At the bottom of the ta, page of Attachment A, this is the exemption form. The following, uh, line was added. It, it reads, uh, "Select Board Approval." Colon, Chair, colon, Vice Chair, colon, the date. So it's just a place for a signature for the chair, the vice chair, and the date they signed it, uh, from the select board. Is there a motion to, uh, make that amendment?
So made. Second.
Okay, made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes as well. And those are all the amendments. So now the question is, is there a motion?
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
On the heading on, on the, on page one, it says Town of Stoughton Vehicle Use Policy. I think we shouldn't, because it's something that we have indoctrinated the word Town of Stoughton Select Board Vehicle Use Policy.
Okay.
That way, nothing can be altered unless it goes back through here.
Okay. So there's a motion to, I'm gonna take that as a motion to make, uh, make the amendment to the, to the header, the Stoughton, that rather than read Stoughton, a Town of Stoughton, it reads, uh, Town of Stoughton Select Board. And then goes on to say vehicle use policy.
Yes.
Uh, is there, is there a second?
Second.
No, so you made the motion.
Oh. You seconded it?
Seconded by Mr. McCrisky. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes as well. So the, the document has now been amended. Uh, is there a motion to approve the document as amended?
So made. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Vehicle use policy has been adopted.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment before we get into the veterans' policy. Pretty excited about it. Jilda and I found a file of hard copy policies passed by the board over the last, I don't know, seven to 10 years. And there were a, a file about that thick. So Jilda and, and Trish and I are in the process of categorizing them all and putting them with a table of content on the website for you to call up on your computer at any time and it's right in front of you, including forms and everything else. We're gonna introduce that, that new working tool to you, the board members, at the same time, in the beginning of November, that we're introducing the policy, the Financial Policies and Procedures Manual, which will also be uploaded onto that electronic glossary of files. The employees have been asking for it forever. They, they, and new employees will be indoctrinated. Department heads will be taught how to use it. It's user-friendly. Right from their desktop, not from my desktop, but right from the desktop, they'll be able to call up a policy on demand. It's pretty exciting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, uh, final item on our agenda-
Mr. Chairman, Lou is smiling because we're entering the 21st century.
We're gonna fight it kicking and screaming, so, fair. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the amended policy for consideration regarding Veterans Memorial Square dedications. Uh, this is also a document that we've seen, uh, at least, uh, I think at least twice, uh, maybe, maybe a couple more. Uh, there, the document itself has been completed. There's a couple of amendments that have been, uh, recommended by members of the select board. Uh, we'll, there's only three of them, so we'll, we'll read these separately. Uh, this is, uh, only a two-page document. All the changes are applied to the first page. So the first, uh, first amendment to this document takes place in the first bullet point under the header, header of Veterans Memorial Square Approvals and Placement. The very last sentence on that, in that bullet point, and it reads, "At the sole discretion of the Stoughton Select Board and by a majority vote of the board, uh, exceptions may be made to provisions of this policy." Is there a motion to adopt that change?
So made.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the document has been, so amended. Uh, second bullet point, last sentence reads, "The branch of service logo will be included on the signs." Is there a motion to adopt that change?
So made.
Second.
Okay, motion is made by Mr. McCrisky, seconded by Vice Chair Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Document has been amended. Uh, and the, there's a third bullet point. It's a new one. The entire bullet point reads, and this is the amended, uh, in addition to this, this policy. It reads, "While applications for a memorial square dedication will be considered upon the passing of a veteran, the application may be submitted at any time." Is there a motion to adopt that change?
So made.
Made by Mr. McCrisky. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the document has been amended. Uh-
Just, just one more thing.
Yes, sir.
Add the word "select board" prior to the word "policy" on page one. So it'll be "Select Board Policy for Consideration for Veterans Memorial."
Thank you very much. So there's requests, uh, requests by Mr., there's a motion by Mr. Carrera to, to, um, change the header, which currently reads "Policy for Consideration for a Veterans Memorial Square Dedication." Uh, to make a change to reference this as a "Select Board Policy for Veterans Memorial Square Dedications."
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Carrera, seconded by Vice Chair Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So the document has been amended. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, is now the, is there a motion to approve this document as amended?
So made, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, made by, uh, Vice Chair Roberts, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously and our business is done for the evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn, could I just say one thing?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the fact that we are making these select board policies instead of just town policies. The implications of that are that over time, this board is going to have to spend a lot of time reviewing things that, uh, that are seemingly important right now. But in the greater scheme of things, it may be something that we would want to offload. And I, uh, I just caution us to think about that a little bit. But that's, uh, that's something for another day. I'm not trying to change the world here. But I just, to the extent that we pull everything in here, then we can't spend quality time on doing things that are really important. And it's not that these things are not important. It's just that they are probably second-tier as opposed to first-tier issues for the town. That's all I'm saying. Have a good evening. Thank you. Just, just to add, um, something to this. The reason why I, I asked to have the word "Select Board" added in there is because and the town manager should not be dealing with policies. We are policymakers. Keep that underneath our umbrella where the protection is. We don't need Mr. Colter being sued or taken to task because he won't give a vehicle to somebody. But at least if it's the select board on top, that means we vetted it, we looked at it. And when they go to fly cops-
That's when we'll change it, I guess.
If there is no further business, Mr. Chairman, I motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Vice Chair Roberts made a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Carrera. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, motion passes. Uh, we are adjourned. The time is now 8:50. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful evening, everyone.